Please be advised that the last time you'll be more than. Mr. Chair.
Good morning, our special commissioner, Commissioner, welcome to the commission for this. Uh, certainly the mountains still equipped here, uh, we've got four items in total, uh, that have been called or moved into consent agenda, those items are called, uh, ten A three, under the auditor's section. Ten A three, under the auditor's section. The time support members under the facility section standing between five and twenty three six. All four of those items are still on the agenda, they've just been pulled from consent.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner, the court members, welcome to the first of welcome. Our new commissioner in precinct one, Mr. Miles, welcome. Good to have you here.
Hmm?
Said no talking.
Also, who are you here with us?
No, you can clap if it's for them, no other reason. Yeah. Yeah, special rules.
Uh, also the audience with us, our new tax assessor collector, Mr. Rick Barnes.
Why are we clapping at a tax assessor collector?
All right, any other announcements from court members?
I don't know.
Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to our two court members. Um, it is beginning to year and increasing too, and then our town hall meetings, uh, once again, our first, our first town hall meeting of the year, um, is January the, uh, uh, the giro-
Twenty third.
January twenty third at six P M. at the Arlington support house. Our guest, our topic is the Southeast Connector Project. Now, welcome the elements. I will go there and I too, uh, can become frustrated as I navigate through there for text doc and south point instruction. Uh, we'll be there with math and presentation and they will answer all of your questions individually. So, of course, we welcome that.
Any other announcements?
I have one, um, so again, this year, we're going to partner with Fort Worth Stock Show Rodeo, uh, to hold the Tarrant County Salutes Veterans Event on February the third. Remember, this event is going to be free for all veterans to get free entry to the stock show grounds. Uh, and we have hundreds of, of vendors set up to provide workforce, housing, uh, V A services, anything that you can imagine that a veteran may need or want information on will be here at the sec float. Uh, in the second year, we've done it, and last year, we had an incredible time. Um, in two weeks, at Commissioner's Court, we'll have, uh, a reminder announcement, but want to put that on everybody's radar, February the third, Tarrant County Salutes Veterans.
All right, excellent. Any other announcements? All right, now we move to our proclamations, resolutions, and presentation section.
And something really cool happened, uh, in last before Christmas, which is, we have a football state champion, six A Division One, come this area for the first time, I believe, in thirty five years. So, Commissioner Miles, could you please recognize the great folks of your pride?
Yes, Chief Judge, it is my honor and privilege to recognize the North Crowley High School's six A state champs. I'm going to read this congratulatory resolution, and I'll have to be gratified. Whereas, the North Crowley High School Panthers Football Team has demonstrated exceptional talent, dedication, and teamwork throughout their remarkable sixteen oh, twenty four, twenty five season, culminating in their victory as the Texas High School's six A U I L Division One State Champ. And whereas, the Panthers achieved an extraordinary feat by defeating seven programs with a combined total of twenty four championships in their history, showcasing their dominance and competitiveness here. And whereas, North Crowley outscored their opponents by a combined margin of eight hundred and sixty four to two hundred and eighty three this season.
Wow.
A testament to their offensive prowess, defensive resilience, and overall excellence on the field. And whereas, under the leadership of head coach Ray Gates and his dedicated coaching staff, the Panthers exemplified perseverance, discipline, and sportsmanship, bringing immense pride to their school, families, and the entire Tarrant County community. And whereas, in addition to claiming the twenty twenty four state six A championship title, North Crowley's head coach Ray Gates was named the twenty twenty four Star Telegram Football Coach of the Year. Senior Quentin Gibson was named to the All American Team and twenty twenty four Max Preps Player of the Year. And eight student athletes signed to study and compete at the Division One club. And whereas, this historic achievement has brought immense pride and joy to the North Crowley community and serves as an inspiration to the students, athletes, and residents throughout Tarrant County. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the Tarrant County Commissioners Court, do hereby recognize and congratulate the North Crowley High School Panthers Football Team for their outstanding achievement as the twenty twenty four Texas High School's six A U I L Division One State Champ. And be it further resolved that we honor the players, coaches, and support staff for their remarkable accomplishment and representation of excellence on and off the field. And witnesses were of, we have here on two set our hands and call the seal of Tarrant County to be affixed this fourth Tuesday of January twenty twenty five. Let's give that team a round of applause. I will present the proclamation at their championship parade that will be happening, uh, this Saturday. So, I'll present the resolution to them, and I would just say that that team has galvanized not only the North Crowley and Crowley community, but it galvanized the city of Fort Worth. They demonstrated what community looks like and the power of unity when we come together for a common goal and purpose. I'm immensely proud of the coach and players, and I'm immensely proud of the residents of Tarrant County, Chris and you. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir, uh, excellent, excellent, what a cool thing. You've made the motion to rat by that, I'll second it, any discussion? All right, please cast your vote. There we go, passes unanimously. Uh, next on the agenda is a sad note. I know all of you here know about the sudden passing of Bill Hannah. And, uh, this is a tragedy to live with so soon. Um, his wife and son are here with us, more include, where are y'all? Uh, how about let's give them a big round of applause?
For someone dying? Audience, for someone dying?
Sorry for your loss and your husband and your father, but, uh, as I told you when we met briefly earlier, I never saw Bill without a pleasant look on his face, uh, just a positive guy, easygoing, easy to go along with, I mean, anybody that didn't like him, and, uh, you would be well served to, to try to be like your dad. So, we're so sorry for your loss. Uh, there's a resolution that we prepared, um, to honor him and you, uh, I'm gonna read that. "All due and cared for William Bill Hannah, deeply saddened by his unexpected passing on December thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Bill Hannah was a warm and loving husband, father, brother, friend, and colleague, and left an indelible mark on the lives of those who do him. Bill Hannah was a proud graduate of Texas Christian University, loved all things horned frogs, and was a consistent presence at many Frogs home games. Bill Hannah achieved a long and distinguished reporting career that included award-winning stories on rural doctors, the Branch Davidian standoff at Waco in nineteen ninety three, and a two thousand eight raid of a compound in West Texas. Bill Hannah most recently served as the chief spokesperson for Tarrant County, where he served a pivotal role sharing public information during multiple elections and navigated numerous notable and newsworthy county events. Bill Hannah was a, Bill Hannah was a beloved member of the Tarrant County Administrator's Office, where he forged strong personal connections with coworkers, who will always remember his hallway chats, morning coffee walks, and his warm smile. Uh, and Bill Hannah had a travel, enjoying vacations across the world, was walk or in sunroof, and was always game for adventure. Bill Hannah will be remembered as a master storyteller and compassionate friend. Uh, now therefore be it resolved, we, the Tarrant County Commissioners Court, pay tribute to the memory of Bill Hannah and extend our deepest sympathy toward Luke, his family, his colleagues, and many friends of their great loss. And, uh, I also understand that people in the county would regularly ask him to go to lunch with them, and almost without fail, every single day, he was going to have lunch with Laura. So, God bless y'all, we're so sorry for your loss. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, um, pass this resolution. Okay, the second, please cast your votes. All right, passage unanimously, and so we, you know, normally when we present a resolution, we come up, we take pictures. I, I didn't know if that would be something appropriate to do here, but I asked, uh, the family if they want to do that, and they do, they want to have this memory, so I'm gonna go down there, I'll ask y'all to come up to the front of the podium, and we'll get together. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Uh, on a couple of other sad notes, we also lost two others, uh, over the holiday break. Ty DuPont, who was the accounts payable manager of the auditor's office, uh, our sincere and deep condolences go to his family, loved ones, and coworkers. And another one, that, uh, he was only, he was, he was only fifty eight, I believe. And, um, Jimmy Gaskell, who worked for Tarrant County for ten years and was the facility superintendent in precinct one maintenance, um, passed away over the break, and he's married with one child, uh, our, uh, prayers are with Mr. Gaskell's family. And a sad time, and it seems to happen to a lot of folks, uh, over the holidays, especially older ones, but these are some younger folks, so, uh, we're sad here in Tarrant County to lose all these folks that have served our county so well. Uh, next, we have a proclamation for Tarrant County's one hundredth and seventy-fifth anniversary. We just don't know where that is. Uh, but, uh, we have one, we need to open these papers for it. We were thinking about having the, uh, only elected official who was actually present when Tarrant County was founded, Tom Wilder coming in. That would be fair, so, uh, can we read this proclamation? Tarrant County was established on December twentieth, eighteen forty nine, by the third Texas legislator from the Peters, Texas Legislature from Peters College. Which one are we on that, which legislature was, you know?
Eighty nine.
Eighty nine, the third. Uh, Tarrant County was named after General Edward H. Tarrant, who led troops in the Battle of Village Creek in eighteen forty one, and later that same year established a treaty between the Village Creek Native Tribes and the Republic of Texas, helping the region to settlement. On June sixth, eighteen forty nine, Major Ripley Arnold established Camp Worth, a military post on the banks of the Trinity River, which was granted the name Fort Worth on November fourteenth, eighteen forty nine, by the U S War Department. Tarrant County held the first county seat election in eighteen fifty one and constructed its first permanent brick county courthouse in Fort Worth after the eighteen sixty election. B B Paddock created the Tarantula map, envisioning the county as a major hub for railway lines, and the Texas and Pacific Railroad reached Tarrant County in eighteen seventy six, connecting the county to the rest of the nation. After a period of significant growth, Tarrant County completed construction of its current eighteen ninety five courthouse, fashioned of paint brand from central Texas. Tarrant County's cattle industry, moving in the early days of settlement, became a driving force of its economy, along with the growth of the oil and gas industry in the twentieth century, which shaped the county's development and prosperity. Tarrant County's rich western heritage and Can Do Texas spirit have been key in its transformation from a small agricultural region to a major hub for transportation, aviation, agriculture, education, and tourism. Tarrant County became the third most populous county in Texas in twenty twenty with a population of over two million. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Tarrant County Commissioners Court here, by recognizing the one hundred and seventy fifth anniversary for the establishment of Tarrant County. So, I'll move to, uh, receipt and file the proclamation. Motion second, Judge. Yeah, I actually think we have an audience participation. Oh, we do. One, two, that. J. Edward Lyons. Mr. Lyons? Mr. Lyons, present. Do we have still over him?
We did.
Okay. If Mr. Lyons is there, we'll, uh, have you come up when you get in, but for now, we'll move forward, so we have a motion and a second on the proclamation, any discussion? Please cast your vote.
What? You'd have to listen to the public comment before casting the vote.
We're moving on the other. Passage unanimously?
Come on. Come on.
Good morning, how are you? Yes, sir.
May twenty fourth, eighteen forty three, on Hilltop, the eve in the country, on a tributary of the Trinity River, General Everett Tarrant and his men, which included Captain John Dent, had discovered the largest settlement of the biggest two point draws ever seen in Texas. The Hilltop, the location of the battle of Village Creek, was she carried a permanent peace and settlement in North Texas. It's hand and hill, and marked with a battle ground on Pioneer Park. The eyes point on the Village Creek, the startment of a tremendous history which we are admittedly underselling ourselves. And the future of the town, the Hilltop of the history, personified. Eighteen seventy six, Texas and Pacific track and railway's way passing the Hilltop, July fourth, finally reaching Fort Worth three weeks later. This is what states and the South United. Nineteen oh one, land was purchased with the best one of current firms going west, with the most advanced even like a power generating station in the entire world, to power the northern Texas track and company under urban line, which provided electrical train service between Dallas and Fort Worth. July second, nineteen oh two, ushering in the modern era of Texas history. Previous to that, in eighteen seventy eight, four African Americans founded the Ebby's Missionary Baptist Church on top of this hill where a cemetery was began, which remains. They have seen their historic African American cemetery, the Ordean Home.
Can someone go to the Tarrant County Commissioners Court video and see if you can hear that microphone?
When we discovered the condition of the cemetery, it began our advocacy work for it through our non-fundamental city mobility company, which is the Texas five oh one two three, dedicated to historic preservation of Tarrant County. Its condition, condition was, well, needed serious improvement. People used to term that as a, this was a demolished place that leads us to say it's a much better condition moving forward. Uh, we began our advocacy work in November twenty twenty three, Veterans Day, and learned to kind of bring, uh, the Jay's and property owners with the consolation handling power, city law, and also the Tarrant County Civil Commission, uh, which we have been, uh, working with. Uh, after our appearance front of city hall, and on the environment sale, three J C pieces of land, um, regarding that, then our, uh, that has since been, uh, reversed. The surrounding parcel of this place was eventually made well, you know, that has since been changed and now it's.
I don't know why they put cuffs on him, he wasn't breaking any laws.
Property and these three parcels, which is twelve acres of Fort Worth, um, which was, I believe, passed an exempt session in the city, I'm not sure if I covered this. We have the next criminal, Arnie, and Arnie.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. All right, next we have our employee recognition. We do this every month and honor our employees. So, I'm going to recognize, we get a lot of five year ones today, and I'm gonna call the five year ones out and ask you all to stand as I call your names, for those who are present. Uh, Jason Mobley's. Deanna Belnap. Kelsey Bell. Keneta Brown. Bradley Burkey. Regina Calderon. Regina. Remember the five years, cut them off. Pado Cantara, Gina. Andrew Connell. Amanda English. Somebody's gotta help him out here, he's by himself. Justin Garland. David Korski. Taylor Haley. Tanya Hall. Melissa Hall. Colleen Hardy. Michael Henry. Kevin Hilliard. Alexandria Hughes. Jennifer Jennings. Randy Keer. Joshua Newell. Joshua Mills. Kevin Novak. Mary Ick. Kimberly Pearson. Morgan Perky. Irving Romero. Hal Sinclair. Vicky Strickland. And Murphy Walker. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Percy, appreciate it.
Cut now for our ten year employees, just stand as I call your names. Randolph Anderson. Charles Brogdon the third. Mary Chason. Uh, Alejandra Chavez. David Cook. Judge Cook. Eric Crowley. Kalangi Foster. Uh, this would have been the ten year celebration for Mr. Jimmy Gaskell. Randy Hatcher. Susan Hernandez. Linda Herod Rivas. Peggy Lee. Jackson McMen. Luis Montoya. Sarah Phillips. David Richards. Brandy Rivas. And Judge Kerry Marks. Thank you all for ten years. All right, now for our fifteen year employees, we have Ross Byers.
He needs to be gone now, he was down there. And then interviewed Foxmore, has his full name, his name's Charlie something, and they said, hey, we're gonna be taking him to Tarrant County real right now. They wouldn't be in service, they were assaulted then. Bond Smiley might remember his mom.
Actually, that was fifteen, just kidding. Okay, now for our twenty year employees, two decades. Lori Bennett. Denise Childs. Jennifer Farnum. William Higgins. Alan Hills. Melinda Ortega. Judge Chris Onder. And Donald Rowden. Thank you for twenty years. All right, now we do our twenty five year employees, and I'll ask each of you, if you're present, to stand. Is Sonia Cruz with us today? She has been in public health for twenty five years, thank you Sonia for your twenty five year dedicated service, we appreciate you. Let's give her a round of applause. We have Aaron Johnson in Human Services, is Aaron here today? Aaron has also given us twenty five years from Human Services, thank you Aaron for your twenty five years. Uh, Suzanne Berry, with the one hundred and fifty third District Court, she is not present today. She has also given us twenty five years, thank you to Suzanne. And Patrick Parker, Patrick, are you with us? How are you, sir?
Do you want me to send you this?
Twenty five years of Tarrant County Council Control Officer. Born at Carville Air Force Base in Fort Worth, with the Boswell High School. Uh, spent time in college, attacked, fought, three children. Fact, no one knows about him, he has met George W. Bush and Bill Clinton. What he likes to do for fun, travel, play ping pong, bowl, billiards. Uh, other job titles, he's headed with the county security control officer. Uh, his most memorable moment, his son's winning the United Way Talent Show that Juvenile Services produced, that's cool. And what he likes the most, the camaraderie among the staff, the benefits of the retirement system. Patrick, thank you for your twenty five years, we appreciate you very much.
I think that's the last point of all, it is, two videos.
Now we have our thirty year employees. Uh, Santiago Chavez, been with the sheriff's office for thirty years, I don't believe he's here. But let's give Santiago a round of applause. Next, we have Jeff Hodges, is Jeff here with us? How are you, Jeff, thirty years in the tax office? So, he was born in Johnson City, Tennessee, went to high school at Everland, uh, went to, uh, college at T C E, where he got a degree in marketing.
Charlie was removed and arrested, period. Do you remember his full last name, question mark? Can you send it to CJ? He went to talk to them.
So, uh, what he likes to do for fun, enjoy spending time with family and friends, photograph wildlife, uh, play music, what's the coolest thing you've ever taken a picture of? Wildlife wise.
Wildlife wise, I don't know about wildlife wise, but I caught a really good picture of a, it's a, it's a rodeo of a clown that's walking over a bull, and the bull was trying to get to him, that's probably the best way to ever.
Um, other job titles, he's headed with the county assessment manager in property tax and property tax units liaise on. Um, his most memorable moment, uh, two things. What all went down with the terrorist attacks on September eleventh, two thousand one, and then the March two thousand tornado that hit downtown. Um, what he likes most, working with the wonderful audit team to meet the challenges each day brings and giving his partner the team to make the organization successful. Jeff, thank you so much for thirty years of service, Tarrant County.
Thank you for that donation, whoever that was.
Next, we have Noma Collins, Noma is. Okay, so Noma is a court coordinator of the two ninety seventh, been with thirty years. Born in Pineville, Arkansas, was a first side high school, Tarrant County College. Um, has three children, eleven grandchildren, and three great grandchildren. Uh, fact, no one knows about her, she was an interpreter for the deaf and provided sign language interpretation for Red Skeleton's last Fort Worth performance. Um, what she likes to do for fun, travel to state and national parks in her motorhome. Other job titles within the county, support staff in the DA's office. Her most memorable moment, this is a moment we're celebrating, marrying her husband, fifty four years. And what she likes most, helping people, Noma, if you're watching or listening, thank you so much for your thirty years, we appreciate you very much. Well, who do we have next? District clerk for thirty years, Tom Walker. Born in Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Went to high school at Thomas Jefferson in Dallas, graduated from there in nineteen oh four. Sixty one. Went to the University of Dallas, U N T, has eight hundred plus hours of continuing education at U T Law School. Spent some time in Texas A and M, and, uh, has, has over four hundred hours of continuing education for his real estate license. One son, three grandchildren, three great grandchildren. Um, he listens to classical music, that's a fact no one knows about, I do not know that. Uh, what he likes to do for fun, work, hunt, handle his investments, study his. What he likes to do for fun, work, hunt, handle his investments, study history and politics. And there's probably no one that knows more about politics in Tarrant County than Tom Walker. Other job titles he's had with the county, he's a board member of the convention center where the county owned it. He's currently and has been for a while, the chairman of the Tarrant County Bell on board. He's a member of the IT steering committee. His most memorable moment, marrying his wife, Charlene, in 1962. Wow, that's one year after you got a house. And what he likes the most, managing the district clerk's office in a cost-efficient way. It can be done. Three great-grandchildren, maybe become number one when they are a little older and they can talk. Let's give it up for her 30 years. All right, we have one 35-year employee, Pamela Walker here. I thought this was inappropriate to say, but wouldn't you think somebody who worked here 35 years would look older than she does? I would never guess. So 35 years with Tarrant County, only count. She's a financial accountant. Born at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio. Went to Asel High School. She has two children, a son and a daughter, two grandchildren. She likes to do off-roading, camping, and exploring the outdoors. Other job titles she has had with the county, election clerk under Robert Parker, election administrator. Her most memorable moment, the year the auditor's office did the Wizard of Oz for Halloween. What she likes the most, friends she has made while working in Tarrant County over the years, and the experience and opportunity to work with great people through all the years of her service at the county. 35 years is incredible. We appreciate you very much. Thank you, Pamela. All combined, the people we've recognized today from five years on through, total 940 years of service. I move, as we receive and file the employee recognition. We have a motion to second. Any discussion there? All right, please cast your vote. All right, passes unanimously. And we do have a reception on the fourth floor, so for those of you who were here for this and would like to escape, now is the time. We'll make our way out somewhat quietly and put it into the fourth floor with the reception in here.
I'm going to try to get closer if I can. Maybe I'll just move to the end.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All right, please cast your vote. All right, passes unanimously. Now this takes us to item 10A1, to consider out-of-state travel. We have a motion to approve the aspect of request. Any discussion on this item? All right, passes unanimously. Brings us to item 2, is consideration of a construction manager agreement between Tarrant County, District, and Tax and Company for the replacement of five-year handling units. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. We have a second.
No additional comments, just any specific questions we do have to a marker if you have operation.
Any questions for anybody from JPS? All right, sign up. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, sign up. Please cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Now, we move to item 10A3 from consent to this spot, which is notice of a public meeting. So it's a notice of a public meeting to consider approval of tax abatement agreement with American Realty Trust, Inc. I'll move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we bring up the speaker? Okay, our speaker is Linda Hamrin.
Good morning. As a Tarrant County taxpayer, I would like to know if the taxpayer benefit of providing 50% seven-year tax abatement of the expansion of the coal storage facility on Blue Mountain Road. The company is not required to provide any jobs. Could the tax abatement give unfair advantage to this company versus the coal stores competition? It is unlikely that the company isn't likely that the company will outspend if the county does not provide a tax abatement. Tarrant County and the city of Fort Worth are constantly providing tax abatements, which is one of the reasons why real estate taxes are so high. This may be a great deal, but I can't tell from the documentation provided. It is time to stop getting so many tax abatements without justifying such abatements to both the taxpayers.
Thank you. So just so we're clear on what this item is, this is required to notice that it's going to be addressed or voted on in a future meeting, February 18th, I think it is?
Correct.
So we have a motion and a second to notice this meeting. Any discussion? All right, sign up. Please cast your vote. All right, passes unanimously. All right, now we go to 10B3, also removed from consent, which is to approve the release of the depository collateral. We have a motion to approve this. We have a motion and a second for discussion before the speaker. Robert Bieber. Robert Bieber here. Is the other part room still filled? So if there's no objection, we'd like to see if he's there or others.
I was just wanting to speak on the collateral, the depository collateral, not the one presented to the property. Is it okay if I go ahead and address that, or do you need to wait?
You can only speak to the items before this, which is consideration to approve the release of depository collateral.
Okay, my congratulations. I just have a question. When the collateral released, which is 1.8 million, I think is what I seen on the consent agenda, where does that money go and what do we do with that? And how is, like, where would I find, you know, how, the direction that that money goes?
Yeah, so I would say the money's not going anywhere, but if you, you have three minutes to talk. It's not question and answer. If you ask a question, the staff pops up, say what you want to say, and then I'll have her address it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I mean, sorry. Okay, I just, it's just concerning to me that we, you know, we're sitting at 2.5 million, I think, that I seen on the consent agenda, but that's, to me, doing a lot of spending and not seeing where it's going. And that's just my general concern, and it's just like, where is it going? I just would like to see it as a concern.
Okay, thank you. So collateral, you go ahead, Nancy. Collateral is not spending, but Kim, this is our auditor. Would you explain what collateral is and what releasing depository collateral does?
Right. What we're doing is releasing the things we require to secure our deposits with at least 50% of US securities and agencies. And our balance is decreased at that time, and so the bank is asking us to release the collateral worth over $85 million.
So, Mr. Bieber, you would like to visit with her after a meeting or if she has time. They're in the meeting. This is over here. Welcome. She can fully explain it, but collateral is not spending.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second on this item. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your vote. All right, passes unanimously. Now we go to G1, which is to consider a request from the Tarrant County Bar Association to use the Tom Vandergerde Civil Rights Building for the 245, 11 Texas Title 1, mock style competition. I'll move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, sign up. Please cast your vote.
Judge, one comment. They had asked for us to, or they requested that we weigh these, about $1,500 impact, is that correct? So basically, traditionally, we have this, but we need the court's direction on that of what it is likely to be.
So we have a motion and a second, right? Do we have any other discussion? No? All right, please cast your vote. All right, passes unanimously. Now we get to item G5 from consent. G5 from consent. Is consideration of a professional services contract at Park Hill Architectural Engineering Services for the Precinct Four Mid-Maintenance Center project. I'll move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I have a few comments and questions. I will just find them because I'm curious about the processes that this project follows. I 100% support the maintenance center project in Precinct Four, but the facilities or the commissioner, Ramirez, from Precinct Four, has placed this on the agenda to hold with a new contract with an architectural and engineering plan for that new Precinct Four Rosebridge Maintenance Facility. Do we have the land as for the thing?
No, please, pardon me. We can move forward with the design. We have things we have to go through to get part of the process. The first one is to develop the line documents, which are DBs. We would not even have the location selected that go for DBs. That's going to take approximately three months to get to the level before we start talking about DBs.
Okay, so we're going to design this maintenance center with, and there's no land, and is that the normal process? Is that how you typically build facilities for Tarrant County?
We can do it either way.
Is that how you typically build facilities for Tarrant County?
If we have the land always secured and we know where it's at, if we're building on an existing location, for example, if there's a lot of buildings that have.
You can, but typically parcel first.
It could be part of the process. Is.
Okay. Because what I had understood in planning for, or to construct the Mansfield Sub Courthouse is there's a, there's a process. We identify the land, next is A, next is C, Mar, and Prime, and JD, and the like. So it seems to me that this is going out of here. Is there money set aside to, already, to construct this facility?
So we have the seed money in place of $10 million, $828,670.
And the proposed cost is about?
It's probably the construction cost, it's probably somewhere around $18 million, and then with all the stock costs, total, I think it's $21 million.
Okay, and you've got $10 million in seed money, correct?
That's right.
All right. But that does not include a parcel?
It does.
It includes the land?
Yes, it does.
So that $21 million includes the land?
Yes, we include $100,000 of the property. And right now, we are aggressive through this property. We're down. We'll be meeting with the insurance group in a couple of weeks and show them some of the final locations as to where they're being there. Then we'll be forwarding the letter and et cetera to purchase.
Okay. Well, this is a clear departure from your typical processes, and so it raised concern on my part, particularly because with regard to the need for a facility in Mansfield, the new Mansfield Sub Courthouse, that has been met with opposition from, well, not the members of the court, but from this court. And if we're doing everything in order in Mansfield, I think everything should be conducted orderly on this project, not rushed. And, you know, I can almost guarantee you today, because we have a similar agenda on next, is for the land acquisition of the property in Mansfield for the Sub Courthouse. I can almost guarantee you that it will be voted down today. And so I wanted to point that out. I have never voted down a Precinct Four project because the constituents in Precinct Four are your constituents, yours, my, and his. And so I hope that we can get past whatever power plays or partisanship that exists. We clearly need a new maintenance center in Precinct Four. We need a Mansfield Sub Courthouse in Mansfield, and so hopefully we can do the right things today.
Any other comments or discussion?
They're all going to vote for it anyway.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Next up, we have item G6, which is to consider, consideration to approve a letter of intent to St. Water Capital LLC for purchasing 5.7 acres of land located at the northeast corner of Heritage Parkway and Rixey Parkway in Mansfield. I move to deny. I would also, did we issue a letter of intent for this agenda?
No, it wasn't the letter from the developer. They sent it to us. They sent it to us in the courthouse to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny this. Any discussions?
Yes. Like I just said, we have partisan politics and power play underway. The Mansfield Sub Courthouse, the constituents there need the Mansfield Sub Courthouse. Alyssa doesn't need a Mansfield Sub Courthouse. That courthouse has soil issues, foundation issues, plumbing, HVAC, energy efficiency, square footage, all of it. This is not a sub courthouse that I said we need to replace. There was a commissioner before me, and there was a commissioner before her, who happened to be the Republican commissioner, that, that administration decided that this Mansfield Sub Courthouse needed to be replaced back in 2015, 2016. And the professionals that make up Precinct Two, our budget office, facilities management, our administrators' offices, office, both administrators, have determined that that sub courthouse needs to be replaced. sub courthouse needs to be replaced. We've got the land that we need to go ahead and purchase because it's going to only get more expensive. The land is going to get more expensive. The repairs and rentals and replacements are going to get more expensive. We are renting, what is that thing called, a backup generator? We rent that thing seasonally. And so I just want our taxpayers to see that partisanship is at work. It was a Republican Commissioner who started this whole process. And because a Democratic Commissioner sits in the seat, now they are interested in no Mansfield Sub Courthouse for the constituents that stand on the steps, that lean against the wall, that sit on the floor to visit our tax office, that stand on the wall, that sit on the floor, and every place else to visit our JP's office upstairs while either freezing in the winter or burning up in the summer. So we have got twenty-eight and a half million in seed money that this county, way before we got here, set aside to build this facility that will cost approximately thirty-four million. So we've got twenty-eight million, twenty and a half million of seed money to build a new Sub Courthouse that will cost thirty-four million, the money we got running in Precinct Two. Again, we have a professional staff who is prepared for this, but you see what censorship looks like. Whatever he wants, he gets. Whatever I want for my constituents is a problem.
I wasn't even going to say a word, but there's so many things you just lobbed out there because some ridiculous. So, other than the fact that this has already been voted down twice, and other than the fact that people previously voting it down were Republicans, what evidence do you have of any kind that this is partisan, other than we're Republicans? Not, not good management, good business, not thinking, we need to build a brand-new building for thirty to fifty million dollars when the building is only, what, twenty-seven years old? What, I'm sorry, twenty-four years. Okay. What evidence do you have to suggest it's partisan, other than that we're Republicans?
Again, you have had an entire professional staff. You've had studies, you've had data.
What study?
The soil samples, the foundation, everything, everything, everybody has told this court. All these people who have worked here thirty years have told this court that that sub courthouse needs to be replaced. You come in, you're here two years, and you decide, all of these people are wrong. What else could it be?
All right, any other comments or questions on this item? All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. Please cast your votes. All right, so it, the motion passes three to two. Thank you. The next item is L one, purchasing. Annual contract for professional engineering and planning services, transportation services, with various interests. We have a motion to approve. We have a motion approved, all second. Any discussion on this item? I've seen none, please cast your vote. Passage unanimously. Next up is item L two, approval of invoice payment for preventative maintenance for advanced instruments, barometer and crash, public health, forty-eight hundred dollar payment.
With approval.
Now we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on this item? Now please cast your vote. Passage unanimously. Item three is permission to take bids and issue RFPs. I have a question on item three A. Has anyone ever conducted in this county an analysis to determine if we hired people versus contracted out of the security guard services, whether or not we could take on them? So we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you come up with a microphone? Oh, yeah, you stay there, the microphone's fine. When did we do that?
It's been several years ago, when we were looking at the cost of the jury parking lot and the resource connection to have security guards out there.
Like ballpark, I'm going to be talking, two years ago, five years ago, fifteen years ago? And what, what did we determine?
We determined that it was more cost-effective for us to help.
So if, if we were to authorize this today, certainly that obligates us to go higher security. After five years, I'd like to take, I'd like y'all to take another look at it and see if it would be more cost-effective to have our own folks instead of contracting out and just report back at the time, whenever this will come up again for any kind of vote. Okay? Any other questions for me and court members on items three A through E?
I have a question about when we send your own folks, is that sheriff's deputies?
It could be, it could be, you could do it from any different constable's office, you could just hire our own security force, I mean, I could say any number of options.
What I do think, I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, so we already made a plan for juror pardon. As the grave was torn down and Panther Island develops, was our plan.
Basically, we have a C made deposit garage that's being built. We have an extension, I think it's through next, third floor, from now on, the grave. I think the plan is.
Almost at public comments. Trial, this is about the deaths in Tarrant County Jail.
All right, any other questions regarding items three A through E? All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve, to grant permission to take bids and issue RFPs. Speakers, thank you very much. Three speakers, Julie Griffin, Gerald McHale Cox, and one more, two speakers, Ms. Griffin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the project to upgrade the full spread facility to meet the security. I question the appropriateness of this expenditure of fourteen point three million dollars of Tarrant County tax years' funds. In recent months, since the ending of the Garza County Jail housing contract, the population of the Tarrant County Jail has averaged some forty-two hundred daily. With a capacity of five thousand fifteen, it would seem that the three operational jail facilities, Tarrant County Corrections Center, Long Island, and Green Bay, are sufficient for our average daily population. We can continue to do more to keep our population at a reasonable level by deflection and diversion of individuals with mental illness into a correct level of care, transfer of appropriate persons to the mental health jail diversion center, and also cutting down on incarceration of the sixty-seven percent of the jail population that is pre-tribal, i.e. not connected to any prior. In short, this is a misuse of county funds. Please assure us that county funds and county facilities will not be used to incarcerate and detain immigrant individuals and families that live and work in our community. Any expansion of jail facilities in our county is automatically suspect in this regard, given the current climate and the transition of administrations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox, as well. Ms. Cox, not here. Are we cleared out of room?
Not yet.
Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second on this item. Any further discussion with court members? All right, sign up, please cast your vote. All right, passage unanimously. Next item is appointments to boards and commissions. I have several I would like to make. I would move to appoint Commissioner Kraus to the RTC, Mr. Ramirez to be the chairman of the Tech Share Board, Commissioners Kraus and Miles to the Housing Finance Corporation, and Commissioner Kraus to be the liaison from the court to mental health and JPS. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussions on that item? I've seen none, please cast your vote. All right, passage unanimously.
I have a couple nominations. Appoint, I move to appoint Commissioner Miles to the IT Steering Committee and add liaison to JPS.
Well, I don't believe we have two, and that means you're being asked.
I think we do have two.
I'm sorry.
Liaisons to the JPS.
Liaisons to JPS? So the informal liaison, I've only known we had one for JPS.
Why can't you have two?
We don't have any formal liaison relationship with the court's practice in passing. It serves previously to manage in that capacity.
I looked at a spreadsheet that had two, two spots for it. That's why, I mean, I heard that they had two spots on that spreadsheet.
Maybe we could get a briefing and close on the liaisons that's going to be discussed.
Is there any reason we could not have that today, since this isn't a agenda item? Are we prepared to have such a thing?
I'm not prepared to accept it, but I'm sure you can do it off the top of your head on the top of it. Because this is a competitive position, so everyone has a business to do, plus the warrant to serve this capacity. There's no reason why we could not do the liaison with the structure.
I mean, ultimately, the whole liaison program is just a made-up thing out of thin air that is not statutory, is even not in policy.
Then why can't you have two?
Hey, we're giving you this informal designation, but we're voting on it, is that what it is?
That's my interpretation.
Then why not have two?
Okay. Repeat motion.
I move to appoint Commissioner Miles to IT Steering and add liaison to JPS.
Okay, all right, all second. Any discussion on that? All right, sign up, please cast your vote. Passage unanimously. Any other board or commission appointments?
Okay, here we go.
I move to.
I, I, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Simmons to the Purchasing Agent Board, the Regional Transportation Council, and Mental Health Jail Diversion Center.
There is, I guess you made your motion, you want to, but the RTC was just built, so would you like to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend it and just say the Purchasing Agent Board and the Mental Health Jail Diversion Center.
All right, so there's a motion, do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, sign up, please cast your vote. All right, passage unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Next up, we have three briefings, three briefing items. The first briefing item is regarding Vernon Lance. Do you have someone here that's willing to address this?
So we have a hundred individuals here. We have representatives from the Sheriff's Office, the sheriff himself is here, also representatives from NHR and JPS. I'll leave the sheriff to this one, I'll see you personally.
Good morning. We've been requested this briefing items, clarify, on two, one hospital and jail that were both in custody, and we have listed laundry items that have requested several things, of course, active investigations that we can't speak on, so kind of get to put a balanced, put view of several things that happened. The la, the last one was, was requested by anybody to answer you, and I give you some of the public information that's.
Now, before, before we do that, is there any issue, Mr. Crowe, with him discussing basically what amounts to A and B at the same time?
No, I don't see what issues that there is.
Briefing items, we'll vote. Okay, so what we'll probably do, we take little comments and just combine A and B. You signed up for A, you were called, you were B, publicly, too.
It's, anyway, I'm sorry, here, here's the public information on the first item. He was arrested by Grapevine Police Department, according to that.
And this is which one? The answer is?
And they received a call to a smoke shop in Grapevine, and he was upset, he stumbled around the parking lot, officers arrived, they found him, saw his vehicle, and they knocked on the window. He woke up and was trying to drive off, and we got him stopped again, and got him out of the vehicle. He was very disorientated and, and obviously intoxicated. He, he was complaining after his arrest, there were some medical issues, and he was transported to Baker Hospital, where he was seen and cleared, and then sent to the Grapevine jail. He, he then came to the Tarrant County Jail on the twenty-fourth of December. His profile, I'll be very careful with this, is, has, his profile fit eight percent of our inmates. His profile fit that he had underlying health, product health issues, and he also had addiction drugs. And he had been involved over the years of the last, since he was a kid, of several arrests for narcotics and, and that kind of. He, the particular drug he was arrested for this time is ketamine. And ketamine is often used by anesthetologists, it's used in the private market, and however there is, obviously, illegal ketamine, so. Anyway, I think it often looks like opioids, but isn't, but looks like. So he was, he was placed as an IPR inmate that the medical services could get to him. He was in our custody for a total of four days. He was seen by medical on high occasions, and on the occasion that he went out on a sortie, that we called a Dr. Party, who all was witnessed by both, excuse me, he was in a cell seeing two nurses when he collapsed. And life-saving stuff was taken place immediately, within very few seconds. And he was, and he was worked hard by not only JPS, but also our staff, and the fire department arrived and assisted, along with med center. So there were a lot of medical hands on him. And life-saving measures was taken for over forty minutes before a doctor declared him gone. That's the overview, there's a lot of details that are still going on. Investigation continues, independent investigation by the medical examiners occurring as we speak. I expect results back from that for months, to be quite honest. And then that, this case will also be reviewed by the police department. I don't see that conclusion until, like some, to be quite honest with you. So it will not be, by now. I think the takeaway is, is that all protocols were followed by Tarrant County Sheriff's Office personnel. I believe they were followed by all the medical personnel, the full work PD, everybody followed the law and followed what protocols are in the circumstances. It's very unfortunate that he passed, though when he did, he got the best healthcare we could deliver at the moment, and our people were involved in it. In regards to Lance. In regards to Ramsey, who was in jail, had been in jail with us since September last year. He was facing a $1.4 million bond, he was there on six counts of sexual assault on children, or aggravated assault of children, and subject to outrise according to reports and affidavits. And there...
What is, what is an outcry?
Outcry of the victim that he assaulted. And he was, no pre, I didn't have in my briefings any medical issues. And they got a number on the day questioned. We had several witnesses, he was sitting down and fell. And was very disorientated, didn't know where he was, was trying to get to the hospital when he, due to part of the tour, he crashed and my second events took off. And then he passed away in the hospital medical attention. That's the thirty thousand, both of these are still under investigation, you know? Investigations take twists and turns. So we don't know until we get all the information back if something else happened. But according to everything that we have seen, Tarrant County Sheriff's Office followed all state guidelines and our guidelines, which is better, or higher than the study. And in both of these cases, correctional officers in particular advocated for those prisoners, both requesting medical. And also, they advocated for them by the number six y'all. And the other things that need to be done, and same, which we always do, is that it wasn't that long ago that State Y'all Commission visited and gave us some notice, especially when passed requiring codes. And they reviewed all this, and of course, the Department of Justice was in. And in fact, plotted particular JPS and system that we have. So I think that we've done everything that we could do. And my people, for all my discipline and full discipline, you know, as I tell people all the time, only the eight percent that we talk about that have narcotics problems is that it's very difficult on the body. And in that hidden city we fall to jail is yet our regular death. It's still not put lower than the free world. And I think that says a lot for what's going on there. And I do want to finalize what I have to say about saying that both JPS and the Ramsey are here. They're incredible teams. And we collaborate all the time together. We visit with each other about what we could do better. And we find ways to do better in the work of care and the services that they have. And I think that's what the DOJ saw when they were here. That's what other people have seen when they're here, that it is a model pursuit. And we continue to do that. We have over two hundred JPS people on staff in the hospital twenty-four seven. And our medical responses are less than five minutes. So when people ask for medicine or they have a medical issue. And we have a family, our inmates are issued a tablet that they can, they don't have to go through the correctional office. They can send a direct message to JPS that they need to be sent. And of course, your classification systems and stuff like that, we sort out different folks that need higher power. And we put that on them, meaning that they go to the front line for our medical services, our MHR services. So they, that's what they do. I think I covered the gamut there as best I could. Still, a lot of things going on behind the scenes.
So one question about Mr. Yancy. There have been reports, I don't know if I can call them reports. A report that I've seen, but multiple people were sending emails that Mr. Yancy was denied medication. Do you have any knowledge or information on that?
There's no evidence of that. In fact, he was delivered medicine on numerous occasions while in custody over those four days.
And when, when medicine is delivered, that's reported?
Yeah, it's all loaded.
And that's been checked? I mean, when everybody was supposed to give medicine, he's got, he got medicine?
No.
Alright, anything else, Sheriff, that you want to add? Don't share up, she's probably with you.
Hi, Sheriff. I have a couple questions, and I just there for you or JPS. I think the questions are, might be for you. At what time, I think I sent this over, I had you, or sent it over. What time approximately did the detention officers notice a medical emergency? And then how long before JPS was identified? And what's that process?
Well, it's, it's the pod officers have the ability to immediately request medical treatment. And our response time in jail generally is around two minutes.
Okay.
That they arrive. And in the, as I said in the Yancy case, is he was talking to two or any, standing up and talking to him when he collapsed. They were right there.
Okay. So the accounts that I have received from friends and other inmates that he was in distress for hours and hours and hours. And the other inmates were allegedly asking for help, to say he's struggling. I was told that it took a while for detention officers to pay attention to him and identify JPS. So that's why I was asking, approximately what time did your detention officers discover him? And then, or discover he was in distress? How long had he been distressed?
I want to make JPS very hard this year, I mean, too, because we cannot talk about some of these pursuits that go on. What I would say is, is that I have seen absolutely no evidence, and I've worked over everything in these things. And what you just said, what my evidence is, is that he pursued medical on a regular basis. He was seen nine times in four days. And, and the officers, when they check on folks, they're checking.
And that's recorded, correct? When they check on folks?
Absolutely, and it's part of the investigation to, if we're able to check on them. That's violation of jail standards.
And so I have that same question for Mr. Ramsey. Do we know about what time was his incident at ten and medical didn't get to him until?
No, he was standing in a facility, behind from the officer. He failed, the officer rushed to him, said, "You're okay, I'm giving you more information than I should." But these numbers are just incredible. He said, "I'm not, I don't know where I'm at." And immediately, within two minutes, I believe it was, just a couple minutes, he's talking to the medical authority, they're taking out their, everything's happening very quickly at that point. He said, it's the witness hall, like three people, including two correctional officers right there.
Okay, and at some point, all of this will be in a report that will one day become public. And so I think the rest of my questions are gonna be for JPS. And I just want to say that at some point, if we can, we can, we can hold with a sheriff accountable who's got to hold JPS, MHR, and this commission court accountable. This, this full court is going to need to decide to take seriously the high number of deaths occurring in this jail. We finished out 2024 with nine deaths, and our jail population is what, forty-five hundred? Forty-one hundred. And Harris County finished out 2024 with ten deaths. Their jail population exceeds ten thousand. Okay, so there is not blame to be shared amongst us. Medical behavioral confinement. I am going to attempt to be optimistic that with these new court members and a new jail chief. And with all of y'all's continued efforts to come down here, put pressure on us to stop these deaths. I'm going to be optimistic that we will see some progress, some changes. And, and in order to not just complain, you know, I've talked to other commissioners, other sheriffs, other, that's what you build conferences for. That's what you build relationships for. And so there is definitely room for a wide spectrum of solutions, starting at the front end. And some of those include policies not to book people if they are in medical and mental health crisis. Emergency detention, to crisis stabilization units instead of booking them. Counsel at first appearance. PR bonds for pregnant people and elderly folks. Actual continuity of care. CCQ checks, not placing people with IPD on forensic waitlist. I am not out to get anyone, except the people that seem to be freaking okay with these numbers.
Smith County is the tyrant county. It's the model of tyrant counties, is Smith County.
And we owe it to taxpayers to bring transparency. These things cost us. These, these deaths cost us, they cost you. You're a taxpayer's dollar. You know, we've got to reduce the cost. We've got to reduce the loss of lives. And to the Yancy family and to the Ramsey family. I've spoken with the Yancy family and representatives are here today from that family. I offer my condolences. And I pledge that I, if I have to single-handedly do it, I'm going to continue to attempt to get to the bottom of this. And I hope this county staff and I hope this commissioners will, will see the issue and narrow several. I have some questions for JPS.
Anything else, Sheriff?
Well, I, is, is, the realistic thought, nobody dying while in custody is absolutely absurd. And, you know, these people, and we have people right now that have BNRs on them in the hospital that are dying from some, some disease, but they're in custody because they killed people or they, they raped somebody. And nobody wants them out of custody because they're a threat to safety of the customer or the county. So there's gotta be some reasonable thoughts on how do we stop natural deaths? Somebody drops dead, a heart attack happens all the time. I think we just celebrate a bill and God rest his soul. But there are other people, all they do, set this happens to the free world all the time. But once they come into custody, we can't give them anymore.
I do not expect zero deaths in the jail. But let me, and I'm not, I've gotta redact some information here. This was forwarded to me on January second. I just saw it last night. My name is Crystal Duffy, and I am concerned about my son's safety. His name is Kristen Harrison, and he is located at Tarrant County Jail. He called yesterday to let me know that officer, I'm not going to say that name, is continuing to threaten him. The officer threatened to kill him, told him, "F" your mother. He told my son that he would die in jail. This is the second time I have written complaints about this officer. I'm afraid for my son because of the terrible things I have seen and heard on TV about Tarrant County Jail. So can someone please check into why this officer, who is supposed to be protecting instead of threatening, is doing this? And can someone get in touch with me? She is a constituent of mine and reached out to me. She lives in Arlington, so...
So she's planned, she's bothering the police?
That's what she, I'll share with you, so you can have the name and the phone number and all that stuff. So I have to be, I have to ask the question. I have to be concerned about this.
And I would very hard say, you give those, we give those all the time, and we always, a hundred percent of the time, run them down to see what's happening. About ninety-nine, forty-five percent of the time, it's locked in. But we're happy to continue doing that. We don't, we don't sit back, or sit back and let it go. We chase them down. But if we don't have it, or we don't know about it, we can't.
Alright, any other questions for the sheriff? Alright, thanks, Sheriff. Then we have, do you have your presentation, or are you here to answer questions?
My name is Ilya Baugh, and I'm the executive vice president for behavioral correctional health of JPS. So I'm here to give an overview of the healthcare services that we provide.
Okay, so hang on just a second here, just to make sure it was clear. Are you about to give some overview of protocol and procedures related to medical behavioral health incidents involving arrestees' medical? Okay, so is there any other item from the court? Or any other questions from the court related to the briefing regarding Mr. Ramsey or the briefing regarding Mr. Ramsey?
I am going to ask her questions about Yancy and Ramsey, that she can do her overview.
Okay, so we're basically moving on to three. If I told these folks that I would call them up together to speak on the, on both A and B together. Now we're basically moving to C. We don't exactly conduct polls here of the audience, but do we, what is the court's pleasure? Bring speakers who signed up for A and B now, or continue hearing from them and then bring all speakers up again? Continue, have any thoughts? Hear from her on the court?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to meet this one. I'm happy to share to an overview of how we deliver medical care in the county jail. Unfortunately, as you're probably aware, I will not be able to provide any patient-specific information beyond what the sheriff has shared in his briefing. JPS has medical providers along with nursing staff available twenty-four hours per day in jail to address urgent and chronic medical needs for inmates. Additionally, all inmates are screened during the jail intake process. As part of the medical intake, inmates are asked questions to provide their medical condition or questioned and asked to provide answers and information during their medical conditions and a list of medications they take on a routine basis. This can be challenging for our nurses during medical intake because sometimes the inmates do not know or they do not want to tell us. When behavioral health needs are identified during intake, including when an inmate reports that they routinely take psychotropic medications, we immediately refer those inmates to MHR, which handles the behavioral health needs at the jail. We provide primarily outpatient care, much like a clinic. We do not operate a hospital in the jail. Our services include primary care for those inmates that need medical care. But not all inmates receive ongoing or continuous medical care. If the care is needed, we follow that inmate during the time of incarceration. And inmates are entitled to refuse care or to be seen by the medical staff. Inmates are also entitled to refuse their medications. They have the same rights as other patients when it comes to their care and treatment in the jail. We do provide other limited outpatient services beyond primary care. If a patient has an ongoing or urgent need beyond what we're able to provide in the jail, that individual is transported to JPS hospital for further care and treatment. We also have access to a dedicated pharmacy in the jail that is available twenty-four hours per day. Regarding protocols, any inmate is allowed to request care for medical. They can do so via the computer tablets that the sheriff was referencing. Or they can tell the correctional officer in their pod that they need to see, and want to see medical. Or, um, they can tell the correctional officer in their pod that they need medical or want to see medical. At which point, we do respond to those requests. The requests are triaged by RNs daily based on their level of urgency and, um, what, what the inmate has requested. We have clinics in all of the jails to see patients. We also respond to calls for medical needs in the jail.
Now, we're gonna take a resense now. We'll be back in five minutes. I would advise everyone to stay here.
Some full licenses.
From Tyran County?
Jesus, sorry, sorry.
Everybody the same thing?
So, so this draw? Is this a fake license? Shh. No, it's just me. Is this a fake license?
Why did you carry your gun into the courthouse?
I did.
No, you weren't. You were made to lock it up.
No, no, no. I carried it into the courthouse until you, fuck, your people changed the rules.
So why did you carry it in? Why didn't you go past us?
Because I made an agreement with you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so I won't do that agreement anymore then, okay? I carry it every courthouse in this town. And you will too, when I sue your ass, because you know exactly what the fucking law is. And it doesn't say T. Cole. It says nine twenty-six C, eighteen USC, nineteen twenty-six C.
Let's debate it around here.
You don't have to debate. You just gotta violate, you just gotta protect my rights. Excuse me.
Don't touch it.
Don't fucking touch me.
Hey, don't touch it.
Back the fuck up. Don't tell me to relax when you're so damn fast. You're a soul demon. Tell me to relax. Let me fucking go and I will, let me fucking go and I will leave. And I will sue everyone here. Don't tell me to fucking relax when you're touching me.
Y'all gotta use qualified immunity. You know what qualified immunity is?
Y'all don't need to touch him.
I'm gonna leave one day. As soon as you get my stuff out of there, I'll leave. And I want everyone's name and badge number, Chief, where you at? Everyone is right here. I want everyone's name and badge number. Don't fuck, Sheriff, your guys are putting you in jeopardy, Sheriff.
I would just like the badge number of the dick cop.
My, my stuff's in here.
He blocks people.
I, I will wait right here. I'm not regularly blocked. So I don't know what you're gonna arrest me for.
On O R T S.
You like your face on camera, right? You got a name? You got a name to go to the other team?
Please don't do this.
I know, I got him.
Lady, please don't do this.
Currently harassing CJ. I got his phone.
What's your name? Where's your badge?
Right. Officer, we're good.
There you go.
Let me get your name and badge number.
My name's Lieutenant Dogby, seven six five one nine.
Seven six five one nine?
Seven three zero five seven.
Seven three zero five seven. Huh? Is he under arrest?
What is he under arrest for?
They're getting you to U C W, even though I have a license, I'm not here to, I'm not carrying. Excuse me, I'm not even texting up. What the fuck? What are you doing? Don't sit here and try and play it for the camera like I'm texting up. I'm going legally. That's mine. You're telling me to relax while you're falsely arresting me? Have you read forty-six fifteen?
This is the third person that falsely arrested.
Sheriff, I've got my law enforcement credentials in my pocket, Sheriff. Don't do this.
Which pocket?
Sheriff, in my back pocket. I just showed it to the chief. Look and check it right now and get me out of these cuffs. And then read penal code forty-six fifteen. You can't even arrest me for unlawful carry because it doesn't apply to me. Forty-six fifteen is non-applicability.
Which pocket?
It's in my le, it's in my left back pocket.
Eric County had to run the hard way. Your costume, Eric County, you're running the hard way.
You need me to go in your pocket?
I saw the video.
No, I can get it to you here, too. Yeah. No, no, no. We're getting this publicly.
And you're gonna take it back there.
We're gonna get this back.
Sheriff, I've got my law enforcement ID in my back pocket. They're breaking the law. You got, you're about to get held responsible.
Let's just get you out.
It's in my back pocket.
I'm gonna take it. Does anything can stick me?
No. Forty-six fifteen, Sheriff. I did identify myself. I've already identified myself. I showed it to like five of you people.
Hold on to that. You still got it in your pocket. It's still recording? Just stick it in your pocket so he can have it?
Right there. There is my peace officer. Excuse me, Sheriff. I am begging you to read forty-six fifteen before you do this. I am begging you to read forty-six fifteen. It's right there.
They know him very well.
Yes, they do know me very well because I opposed them in the legislature. They don't like me.
And they didn't, they didn't recertify him because they made a mistake in twenty sixteen when they issued your-
They don't issue it to me. The DOJ does.
What is he doing with the army?
I was a counterintelligence special agent. I investigated national security crimes, sedition, treason, sabotage, espionage, terrorism. That's what I did. I wore a badge and credentials. I wore a gun. I had arrest authority. Everything that's required in nine twenty-six C.
You had eighteen eleven authority?
Yes. Eighteen USC, not eighteen eleven. What are you talking about, eighteen eleven?
I'm talking about military peace officers.
Yes. I, there's only, there are only three Army MOSs that allow you to carry under L O S A. There are only three Army MOSs. I'm one of those three. It's CI, C I D, and MP. Are you saying that I falsified a federal document?
I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, is that if I saw counterintelligence, listen, I, I would thought-
You're not, not a peace officer.
I wouldn't be issued a law enforcement officer, a peace officer. I did- It says right there on the top, qualified law enforcement, federal law enforcement officer. Yes, I am now. My website is I Sue Badge.
I just need to go home and file my lawsuit. No, I got everything. I'm released. I think I got everyone's names and badge numbers, but I can, I can get it from the sheriff.
Casey J?
Well, I mean, other than having my rights violated and hurting my back, yeah, I'm fine. I've dealt with bad cops before. I'll do it again. All right, guys. I don't know if, uh, I'm still leaving on live. Looks like they might have cut off my camera.
Ground.
All right, well, um, so did I see that Mata was taken?
Mata?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. There was a guy, he had, uh, like hardly any hair up top.
Tattoos?
Yes. Yes, they pinned him up in the corner pretty violently and, uh, took him in the elevator. What they did with him, I don't know.
All right, let me call my wife and cut this off. I'll come back on later, everybody. Um, I'll be back later.